All right, at this time, we have some recognitions to make, and so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ringo to handle the recognitions.
Yes, our first recognition is the Toss at Tasby Text Ed Con performance. That is Mr. Laffler and a number of team members. I'm gonna wait until they make their way in, so I can make it here. So as they make their way in, the background, the toss at Tasby Text Ed Con, Mrs. Roland Smith was president of Tasby, and when that happens, the district gets to be the showcase district for the general session. And this production started over seventeen months ago, a hundred-plus students K through twelve, and got to showcase to the entire state how great the city of Kerrville and KISD is. And it was a very moving and emotional performance. And I've never received so many compliments from board members and other students from around the state about how emotional the performance was. And I cannot thank y'all enough because I knew, I know it was a sixteen-month, over-sixteen-month production to get to that point. And I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Laffler because he was the leader of all of this coordination to make that happen and be successful.
Yeah, so I guess two years ago, Miss Ballzer put this on my radar in February of twenty twenty-three. We got together as a team, fine arts team across the district, and from there, we eventually landed with children and a script and a show. It was a lot of work, it was a good collaborative effort.
I'm sorry.
No, don't apologize. Never apologize unless you do something wrong. But we had a blast down in Houston on September eleventh and twelfth. Firstly, I want to thank you guys and for the opportunity and for taking care of us Thursday night at dinner. And Miss Mangle and the team for helping us put everything together and making sure everything worked and went well. So I'm gonna turn it over to the kids. We'll start over here with Mr. Stone. Let me introduce themselves and tell you the role they played in the show.
Hi, my name's Amber Stone. I am a senior this year, and I was the narrator, and I wrote a song called "Greater Grounds."
My name is Dylan Miller. I'm a junior this year at Tybee High School, and I was part of the tech crew.
My name is Riley Bell. I am a sophomore in the Hall of Fame.
My name is Faith Bosquez. I danced with the Golden Road Fortune and played for a.
Hi, my name is Cooper Pruitt, and I'm a senior, and I sang with the Tybee Choir.
Hi, my name is Paige Cowan, and I'm a senior, and I played with the high school orchestra.
Hi, my name is Denise Simeon. I'm fourth grade, and I was in the elementary choir.
Hi, my name is Ava Cincerala, and I was a narrator.
Hi, my name is Camille Valera. I'm in third grade, and I played as a speaker.
Hi, my name is Avio Freudensbrung, and I'm in eighth grade at HPMS, and I played with the middle school orchestra.
Hi, my name is Kennedy Casanova. I go to Talia Elementary, I'm in fifth grade, and I sang in Dance to River Dreams.
Hi, my name is Bryden Hodges. I am a freshman this year at Tybee High School, and I sang with the Tybee Choir.
I'm Todd Forsyth. I'm a senior this year, and I was the US flag, the ROTC flag detail.
I'm Owen O'Brien. I'm fourth grade, and I'm in the elementary, and I teach at the.
Hi, my name is Jolie Parker. I'm a senior this year at Tybee, and I helped design the Tasby shirt.
Hi, my name is Richard McFarrell, and I am in sixth grade at Hopefield Middle School, and I helped design the shirt.
There you go. This is just a small group.
How many students total participated? Do you have that number?
One hundred and eight, I think. Oh, gosh. I'll say we had over two hundred individuals between student, staff, and family members represented.
It's always a big production for the president's school. And we knew that was coming up for two years, and we're like, oh, no. And it was just wonderful, and it hit such a time in our community of our great loss. And the way y'all, I guess, kind of rearranged it a little bit to fit.
So Miss Stern and I and Miss Ballzer got together, and we said, let's leave it. And we added a short little set of dialogue. And Miss Schmidt helped introduce and set it up. But we presented the show as we had designed, with the exception of one small dialogue.
It was beautiful, and I appreciate all the hard work that all of you did because it took, it took every little bit behind the scenes and front parents getting on there. What gets me is that you had to do this so far in advance, and you lost seniors when you first got the message, and you had to jump down by the sophers and start getting there, working on it, that were going to be seniors when it happened.
That was certainly a challenge. You're talking to middle school teachers, saying, hey, we need representatives, and they're like, we don't know who they are yet.
Well, it was beautiful, and I appreciate all your hard work.
Yes, ma'am, it's a team member, so thank you guys.
Well, thank y'all very much. We'd love to shake your hand if you would come by the table.
Y'all should come see our show this weekend at Tybee. Seven o'clock.
The calendar is wonderful, thank y'all.
Our next recognition, it is National Principals Month, and we could not do what we do with our students, our programs, our kids, without our principals. Now, we try to train our teachers to be, we do train our teachers to be the best they can be, but our principals love our teachers because that keeps them here. And just to recognize our principals, we'll ask them to come up. Mr. Schwartz, Mr. Soralah, Dr. Muton, Ms. Dell, Ms. Carpenter's not here tonight due to a family emergency, and Ms. Miller and Ms. Guzman.
That's yours? Thank you for being awesome. Oh, thank you for not being awesome.
Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Disney's back there. Ms. Disney, I apologize. She's on, yes.
I was busy being paparazzi outside.
I have your name here, I just didn't read it. And so again, I cannot thank y'all enough for the work y'all did day in and day out, because I know you get the pressures from parents, kids, parents, the community, everybody, and even social office, never social office. But thank y'all for what you do, and I'm gonna turn it over to you to say anything you'd like to say. We'll just go down the line and start with Dr. Muton.
Okay, so I'm about to speak for about five minutes now. But just thank everyone for not only this, which is tangible, but for all the intangible that you give us every single day. We can do it without your support, in the school, outside the school, in HUB, when they see us. But just because of you, we can do what we do every day, so thank you.
So, thank you for supporting us, thank you for the gift, thank you for everything. This is going into my second year here at Kerrville, and I'm very happy to be here. And thank you for all the support, everybody around here, just to be here.
You couldn't have picked a more fitting gift. Now, it's great when people ask you what's the best thing about your job, and it's from top down through you guys, the support that we get. I know Tybee's a very happy place, it's a wonderful place, but it's just because we're so supported from the top down, so thank you guys.
Just super grateful to be here and for this amazing community. I've had the opportunity to work a couple of different places, and there's nothing quite like Kerrville. And this is even coming from the Providence High graduate down the road, but happy to be a part of TFND.
I don't have anything different to say than what they said. I mean, oh, my gosh, I just finished three months here, and I'm gonna give y'all an update every month. But yeah, super grateful to, I've worked in a few more districts than Katie has, and I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. And it is so amazing to work in a district that is so supportive of their principals, their administration, campus district-wide, their teachers, their parents, students, just across the board. And I'm just so thankful and blessed and grateful to you all for allowing me this opportunity, and we absolutely love it here, so thank you.
This just gets harder and harder. I echo all the things that they said, but I'm super thankful just as well because it's such an honor and just so fun. Every day is super fun, and I just, this is my favorite job I've ever had, and I've had a few jobs, but this is my favorite. And so thank you so much for giving me the opportunity, I really appreciate it.
Well, it's just important that we work well as a team from the top back down. Staff, students lose if we don't, and working with these colleagues and how hard they work for kids and the support that you guys give us, it just makes it easier to do our jobs when they're difficult. Dr. Ringo, everybody, we appreciate it. It's a good place to be. Haven't worked in another place in a long time. I do feel like it's good here, or you wouldn't stay if it wasn't.
How many years do you have?
Yes, Steve.
As a principal?
As a principal of all the schools that you principled. Started in ninety-seven as an assistant principal at Tybee, so a few years.
We appreciate you.
I was cleaning out some tax stuff, some toss stuff that I taught on the other day.
Beautiful connections.
Well, we appreciate all of you and all you do, and we'd love to shake your hand and thank you personally, and so please come by and say hello.
I did one. One, two, three, one more time, one, two, three.
Our next recognition is a surprise for our board. We had a August twenty-ninth, we had a first responder dedication game where our uniforms donated, and we honored all first responders who showed up on July fourth and since July fourth. And the gift to our board of trustees are jerseys from that game that have first responder on the nameplate and the Kerrville Strong on the shoulder patch, and TFND on the front. And so we want to give one of these to each of the board members because obviously a very emotional and tragic summer, and your support and just leadership helped us do what we do with our schools and house of first responders, our team of drivers, and Mr. Soralah, Coach Ramirez, Ms. Ballzer, going out to the camps on July fourth and fifth. And so we just want to thank you and give you a jersey. A may-do look, as you saw if you were at that game, first responder, Coach Neil, thank you. First responder on the back, TFND on the front, and then Kerrville ISD Strong on the shoulder patch. And the numbers are offensive numbers, since y'all help lead the governments, the districts, so they are good.
That's offensive. Thank you, thank you.
Are these guys?
They all have actual jerseys.
Andrea, I think I'm gonna refrain from putting my.
Chicken.
I am chicken.
Is yours small over there or large? We probably need a tray. You can do it, you can do it.
There's a place your uncle passed.
I've got the same problem, but it's a different place.
Coach Neil, thanks you though. I got jerseys.
Hey, Jack, can you go? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much, and thank you for coming.
Now, for the final recognition is our Inspire Award, and these are nominated by colleagues. They nominate their fellow employees for going above and beyond, just being kind, being there for their team members, supporting their team members, whatever that may be. And this is such a great award because it is from fellow team members in these nominations. So the first one is Ms. Caroline Williams, first grade teacher at Starkey. She comes up, and before I turn it over to her to say a few words, and her family that's here, she was nominated by Megan Adamson, who is a first-year teacher. And she notes Caroline has been instrumental in helping our new teachers, including myself, integrate smoothly into the classroom. She goes above and beyond answering our questions and teaching us how to prepare so it can be the very best for our students. Without her, this transition would not have been possible, and I'm so thankful to be on her team, so thank you for all you do.
Definitely, like, I did not realize that you were going to be reading the nomination. I love that especially just because, so I moved here in the sixth grade, and then I went through schooling, and I graduated from Hill Country High School, like, Steve, what's his back there? He was a huge inspiration in my life, and so I love that now I get to come back and I get to teach. And now my kids also get to now go through this whole wonderful school system, so thank you.
Before we shake your hand, you want to introduce yourselves?
Sure, come here, guys. They're like, hi, I'm on. So I have Remy, who's in second, Carter, who's in seventh, and Evelyn, who's in tenth.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you for sharing your mom with us. We appreciate that greatly, and we'd love to shake your hand if you come by and greet us.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Williams, don't leave yet. We're gonna do the next Inspire Award, I want you to picture it. Our next award recipient for the Inspire Award is Evan Owens. There he is. Math teacher and coach at Tybee High School, and this is from a very special person, Katie Nichols Owens. And she wrote, Evan Owens consistently puts his students and coworkers above himself. He is constantly going above and beyond with his responsibilities and never hesitates to lend a helping hand. He epitomizes servant leadership and the TFND spirit in and out of his classroom and athletics. Evan represents all of the characteristics that Kerrville ISD values and inspires those around him to do the same. And I just want to say, I've been here three years, and your smile and demeanor everywhere I go and what you do, it is a constant supporter of mine of all of us, so thank you.
Sorry, my wife, she got me there. Which is funny because, you know, I'm standing up here, and, yeah, shit, she'll shake her hand, but, you know, I'm who I am because of her and what she does. She's my inspiration. Wouldn't be in this district without her, so she got hired first, and I was a tag-along. Amy Arns listened to me my first, you know, the second half of my first year here, still trying to navigate and understand the mind of a sixth grader after only having taught high school before. Ms. Ballzer called me and said, do you really want to come back to my high school and give up middle school PE? And it was the best decision. This place has been amazing for us. I can look out in the audience about all these people that have helped me grow and allowed me to grow, and I'm just blessed to be here in Kerrville ISD, so thank you.
As I say, you gotta introduce her.
Yeah, this is my wife, Katie Nichols Owens. She does the Golden Girls and all that stuff, so.
All that stuff.
Yeah. If you saw my dance moves on Fridays, they're all from her, so.
If you didn't, I have a video.
Don't forget sharing that.
We're still talking about Mr. Soralah's dance moves.
Yeah, there were some of those.
We agreed never to talk about it with each other again, so.
Well, thank y'all for being a power couple in KISD. The programs that each of you lead are some of the very best and brightest among our students, and we know it takes a team within the household, and so thank y'all for being a team, and thank you for being Team TFND because both of you play vital, vital roles, and we'd love to shake both of your hands because we know it's a joint effort, so come on by.
Thank you both.
Great choices, both.
Yes.
I know both, and they're both very inspiring people, so great choices this month. All right, we will move along on our agenda, and we have open forum. Ms. Mangle, do we have a speaker for open forum? Not tonight. Public testimony on an agenda item, do we have a speaker to speak to that? All right, we will move right along, and can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Moving up the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Second.
Second, Dr. Sprouts, all in favor of adopting the agenda, raise your hand. And it carries six-oh. Mr. Calderon is away on work and could not be here tonight, and so what you see is what you get, so. All right, consent agenda. Dr. Ringo, is there anything you'd like to highlight?
Yes, the standard interlocal agreement with the Kerr County for the youth center as evacuation site, this is on here yearly, but upcoming events. You know, we have, in November, we'll have our school first report, which is the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. And want to highlight that since 2020, Mr. Jahadi's team with the A-Lookin' Twenty-One indicators and KISD has received a perfect one-hundred score of A Superior Achievement on that, and that will present it next month in November. And so we cannot thank Mr. Jahadi enough for that. But the other key piece, you were able to see Mr. Laffler and team tonight. We're gonna do a public performance in January for what we presented at Toss at Tasby. That date has not been set yet. Mr. Laffler requested he get through the Christmas concert first with the band, and then we will get a date set and advertise that to about the community to come see that performance live versus through recording. And so that is the last highlight for upcoming events.
I recommend we approve the consent agenda and authorize the superintendent to implement the action items as presented.
Thank you, Miss Schmidt. Second, Mr. Stevens, all in favor of adopting the consent agenda? All right, motion carries six-oh. Thank you very much. We move right along. Information items, and I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Ringo, to introduce our guests.
Yes, we have a very special guest, State Board of Education update and activity report by Mr. Tom Maynard, and out of District Ten, and I believe, is it since 2013, you've been on the State Board of Education? And so we are glad you're here and welcome, and he's gonna just provide us an update on what's happening with the State Board of Education.
Very good.
And thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for what y'all do. Y'all have had a, 2025's been challenging, to say the least, I know, for y'all, and specifically here in Kerr County and Kerrville ISD. But, you know, you just, you see these, you see these students here, and you get reminded just in terms of why you do what you do, you know, why you get that big salary, and like, it's time over here. And, you know, that, when I walked out, I was in one of these back offices, and I think they had the graduating class of nineteen thirty-eight. It's like, okay, so, you know, those would have been born about nineteen twenty. We can assume that if they're around, they're very, very old, but probably not very many of those, is that like that? But, you know, they all live lives, and all these young people here are future adults and future taxpayers. What manner of adults will they be? And so that's the work that we all do, and thank you for that. I think that Roland and I had this conversation about, you know, just periodically just showing up and giving y'all a little bit of an update, and I think I want to kind of focus, you know, my thoughts a little bit about things that might affect you. And I will tell you that, I'm gonna land around, y'all can see the screen right there. So we're gonna land a little bit around social studies in my presentation because it is gonna affect you. And I'm gonna show you how and why, because as we move forward in this process, is that, you know, with, there's gonna be some tectonic shifts in content, and probably for the first time really in about fifty years. Because essentially, just in terms of framework and such like that, we've been doing much the same thing for a very long time. And I got to thinking a little bit about some of the social studies classes I had, like, I said, well, that was fifty years ago, and we're still doing roughly a lot the same thing. So just as a reminder to everybody, this is that, so the TEACs or Texas Essential Knowledge and Skill, those are curriculum standards. You know, not to be confused with curriculum. Remember that when we talk about curriculum, we're talking a lot about, you know, methodology and such. Curriculum standards are just really knowledge and skill statements, student expectations, what a student should know and know how to do. And that's what drives your instructional material, drives assessments, drives curriculum. So that is one of the things that the, one of the big things that the State Board of Education is tasked with. A lot of people ask, like, what does the State Board of Education do? And they say, like, does the local school board answer to the State Board of Education? No, the local school board answers to the voters, you know, but the legislature has tasked us with certain things, and this is, curriculum standards is one of the big things. Wasn't always the case. I mean, curriculum standards-based education goes back, Dr. Ringo, I don't know if you remember, nineteen eighty-four, House Bill Seventy-two.
I was not, I was not employed yet publicly.
I was working on a Senate staff at that time, and I had a front row seat to House Bill Seventy-two. And so essentially, what we've got here is, I want to just show you kind of where we are in the timeline. I know it's really kind of hard to say. I know it's really kind of hard to see, but one of the things that you see up there in September 2025 is it talks about a framework, and that's what I wanna kind of really talk a little bit about. And, you know, we do have some challenges as it relates to the social studies education. And we see a lot of this, and this is that, we see this all the time, just in terms of what the students are not getting. And it's really, when we take a look at the student proficiency, the numbers kind of bear that out. Not only on the STAR test, but when we look at things like STAR and NAEP. And so these are things we're looking at, and I think that the position of the board is, is that if you keep doing what you've been doing, you're likely to keep getting what you've been getting. And so we kind of looked at this thing just in terms of when we were, I will tell you that in terms of what I was really thinking about on framework, there are some big, big pieces for me. One of those is that we wanted to ensure protect Texas history. A lot of conversation about Texas history. The last time we had this conversation, a lot of people thought that the board was trying to diminish Texas history, and we're not. We also know that we wanted to position Texas history in such a way that there would be involved in assessment in some ways. One of the other things that we thought was really important is if you look at the current standards that were adopted in 2010, you go look in grades K1 and 2, there's not a lot of content in K1 and 2. And so that was one thing that we were trying to get at. We're looking at really in terms of layering and making sure that it is chronological. And then here's all the state story requirements that we have to meet. There's a bunch of them, I'm not gonna belabor that, I'm just putting that up there to let you know that there's a bunch we have to think about. When we adopt standards, you know, y'all know something about having to follow statistics. So here's where we are today. These are essentially, when you look at the standards that were adopted in 2010, but that framework is essentially the framework, the same framework we've been doing for a very, very long time. Very long time. And when you, particularly when you look at K1 and 2, this is that, just in terms of real historical content and things, there's not a lot there. And people, you know, that, one of the things that we had this conversation about is that we don't really teach a lot of world history and world civilizations and things like that for the kids get in high school. We've really missed out. I will tell you that the critics of that will say, well, we don't think that that's really developmentally appropriate. That's why, you know, my answer to that is that, well, we've been teaching ancient civilizations in Sunday school for a very long time and doing it very effectively, thank you. You know, if you do it correctly, actually, young kids, I was talking to a business partner of mine today, and he was talking about his, a four-year-old grandson that came up and was in this program, and he was singing this song about some historical battle or something like that, and he said, he looked at Wendy, he says, and they all died. Four, you know? And so actually, young kids would love that kind of stuff, you know? If you do it in a very engaging, appropriate way. And so that is some of the things that we're looking at, just in terms, particularly in the lower grades, and then just in terms of it being chronological. Lots of debate on this. This was one of the models that got rolled out. This is not what was adopted. This is a piece that was, that began, became the starting point. What we actually adopted is this one right here. And I bring this up to you for this reason, this is, it is very different. Very different, just in terms of when you look at that, just in terms of what we've got in grades K1 and 2, there's gonna be a lot more content there as you get into third grade, and it is gonna be very different. The only reason I'm telling you that is that, is that when we, when this thing goes in motion, now let me tell you something, is that you go back, wanna go back and look at this thing, is that we have to have this thing adopted in June of 26. That's the mandate we have in the legislature. And then from there, where do we go from there? Well, we've got the instructional material. But anytime that you have a shift like that big, and particularly in elementary grades where you've got self-contained classrooms, I'm telling you that is that because that gives you an opportunity to start thinking about what that's gonna look like in terms of in-service, you know, how do we support our teachers to get this thing executed and done very, very effectively, okay? That's really the big thing is going on. We were doing the EMBR, or the second big round of the instructional materials and adoption process. That culminates in November. We're having a big discussion about mathematics. I don't think that that's gonna really result in big, huge changes to the standards. We adopted, so if you remember that implementation, it was done very badly. And a lot of, a lot of skill gaps and things like that because a lot of, a lot of that content moved out. And, but that, those were adopted in 2012, I think those implemented by 2014. I don't know that there's a big appetite for a wholesale change on that, but we also know that we have a big crisis in mathematics in the state. Not just the state, in the country. It's not just, not just Texas, it's everywhere. And we are really looking at ways to get at that. Also, you know, the State Board of Education, we have certain levers that are available to us. This is the big one, instructional materials is another one. We do have some as it relates to teacher preparation, some rulemaking and oversight as it relates to teacher preparation. There's a lot of levers we don't have. But that's where we're.
Who actually came up with that?
Who came up with that?
Who decided it was gonna be set up like that? Who actually did that?
Well, there was an ad hoc committee of the board, and it took a lot of testimony, but there was also a lot of organizations that were involved with that and a lot of collaboration. But for instance, well, Don Frazier was involved in that. You know Don? Here at Shriners University, Texas Center, runs the Texas Center here at Shriners. And Don's gonna be actually one of the content advisors, one of the content experts, if you know Don. That's where it's at. I'm just telling you right, that was adopted by the board, and so that's the framework moving forward. Where do we go from here? Is that now we're working on, we're reporting content advisors. Now we're gonna move in, we're gonna open the application process for work group. And so if you've got teachers that wanna serve on work groups, it's a good experience for them. They can get continuing education units, and then we will be down that path. June, June of 26, we'll have their new standards. Now, that doesn't mean they're gonna need them in next year because we have to follow in with instructional material. So people say, like, well, why does it take so long to do that? Well, because if they want you to get standards, then you gotta adopt instructional material to, you can't implement new standards unless you've got new instructional material to do.
Tom, is it generally a legislative action that would cause you to make these changes to the curriculum standards? Generally, is that where it starts?
No, it is purely, purely, this is one of those two things that's actually the mission to go forward. Most things we do are directed to us by the legislature. This is not one. The legislature directs us to create standards. I mean, that's one of the, one of the things it's tasked for us to do. And we kind of took a stand this back in 2022, and it went very badly because we executed a good board, honestly. And the work groups came back with something that, you know, that if you want children to hate social studies, just implement that right there. I mean, it was that. And it's like, well, we're not doing that, you know? We just scrapped that and funded and made a few changes that the legislature required us to do. And then we essentially have been kind of working in the background for a couple of years to get back to this point.
And how quickly can the publishers respond once you do adopt them? And how quickly can publishers respond to getting them into the textbooks?
Yeah, well, that's a good question. So if we adopt them in 2026, okay, then we will start, the new EMBR cycle will start in the fall of 26. Or actually, we probably have new instructional material by the end of 27.
I mean, you're gonna take like that segment there, that's gonna take six years to implement. The third graders, you're not gonna stick the fourth graders the first year with that curriculum, right? I mean, it's gonna, those third graders are gonna pick up that in the fourth grade and the fifth grade. But from fourth grade on, they're gonna, they're gonna be old curriculum.
Yeah, I don't.
This is gonna be implemented over.
I don't, I don't have an answer on that.
I mean, it would be crazy to try to stick everybody with that all at the same time because the people in eighth grade haven't had with the third, fourth, fifth, and sixth, seventh graders.
Right, yeah, yeah. We haven't, we haven't gotten that far down the track with that, it seems.
Need some help, let me know.
Volunteer for a work group.
Yeah, yeah. These are the strands, that's not nearly as, you know, that's just in terms of what are the strands, the content, through that, all of that. I wanna just kind of wind up and just kind of talk a little bit, just really briefly about something that is kind of good news. I don't know if you know this, and you've probably heard, the permanent school fund, you operated as part of TDA for a long time. One of the things that I did as a member of the board and working with the legislature, we actually brought permanent school fund out from underneath the TDA and created a government corporation. A little bit like UTECO, permanent university, that manages the permanent university fund, they actually did that way back in the 1990s. There's a lot of reasons that we did that. A lot of that was just to, well, really two big reasons. We needed to, you know, the school landlord was sitting on $4 billion of uninvested cash because of what happened over there. We needed to combine all those investments all together. Big thing is we just needed to change the culture of the organization. This is a big investment organization. We are now at, you know, $60 billion of assets we're managing, $60 billion to support public education. We really have two, two big, two big missions. One of that is to generate direct returns for Texas public education. We are doing that. We've had a huge change in leadership in that organization. We've been able to actually change the culture of that organization. I'm the chairman of that organization. I'm the CEO and I'm the chairman of the board. We had, that's why we had a record distribution this year. The other thing that we do is we're the guarantee on the local school district bonds. And some of you may remember that we have a pre-year battle with the IRS because of their intervention and all that. Now we kind of have another little issue here, and that is, is that the bond rating. In order for us to do that, we have to maintain a bond rating. And we are in good shape with two of the three bond rating organizations. The one that we are not in good shape with is Moody's. Because Moody's, the way that they look at that is that they, they wanna assume that, say, what would happen if all the school districts defaulted all at once in one year? Well, that will never happen.
We have never had a school district default on a bond.
Never, yeah. We've been doing it, that was a 1983 constitutional amendment, we guaranteed a first bond in 40 ISD in spring of 84. There's never been a default. And because remember, these are ISDs that are government subdivisions with a tax authority and tax base. And that would also assume that we would have to take ownership of all the property and pay off all the bonds, which is not what happens. What would happen is that we may have to pick up payment or something like that. But remember that a school district can adjust and reconnoiter and do whatever they need to do, but it's never happened. We do also guarantee charter school bonds, but charter schools are a different animal because the charter schools, they have to pay, and it's essentially, we have a bond insurance program that's self-funded by them. And they, whatever their savings are, they have to pay into that pool. And there's actually a charter reserve fund that is actually a separate pool of money to insure those. But, but that's, that is a little bit of our challenge, and the reason that's important is, is that because as we move forward and try to generate better returns, but becoming a little bit more illiquid in terms of our investments, well, when you reduce liquidity, well, then that kind of creates a little bit of an issue in just in terms of your bond rating. And particularly if you've got one bond rating organization that looks at it that way. And so that's a conversation we're gonna have to have with Moody's. And so I told my CEO, I said, I said, well, you know, the problem is, is that they're emotionally unstable, they're moving. And you can kind of see how we've been doing just in terms of against the policy benchmark. I want to just show you this one right here. We were really under risk, and the reason we were under risk is that because, is that it was because of the bond guarantee issue. And there was a prevailing thought in our organization and the leadership core organization that they could not quantify just in terms of how much liquidity we actually had to have to maintain that bond rating. We actually solved that, solved that mystery. And that has enabled us to be more liquid and be able to move forward, and that's why we're able to have better returns. And as we move forward and get better returns, every dollar that we raise on permanent school fund is something we don't have to raise in taxes. And so you can see that that's our distribution this last go around, and we think that we can get a lot better. And just I want this just to note, one of the things that we did as part of our strategic plan with the organization is that we had made an intentional effort to invest in Texas firms. We're the eighth largest economy in the world. And to the extent that we can, we wanna reinvest in Texas and keep as much money in Texas as we can. Last one is, is that just wanna show you that, it's just that you may hear a lot of scuttlebutt about the, you know, doves and all that kind of stuff. It's that the average of our peer funds in town, just in terms of operating budget, is about 13 basis points. We're 9.7. We're the low-cost provider. And so that's a story that we wanna tell. Any questions? Is any of that helpful to you?
Absolutely.
And if there's no, no questions, it's thank you for the opportunity to come and give you that thing.
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here, we appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, next we are going to discuss our campus improvement plans of our secondary campuses. And so, Dr. Ringo, would you like to introduce our folks?
Yes, well, Hell Country High School, Mr. Swartz, Tavi High School, Mrs. Shaw, and how people from middle school, Dr. Mouton, and also Amy Arns are going to cover our CIPs for our secondary campuses. And as a refresher, last month we had our elementary camp school reports.
All right, good evening. And just a minute, we are going to hear from our three amazing secondary campus principals and an update on their progress for 25, 26. And before that happens, we're just gonna do a quick refresh on our STAR data over the last three years as compared to the state and region. And so our first step, we have our sixth grade math STAR data. And you can see that we have had a slight decline in sixth grade math, particularly compared to state and region results over the last three years, and especially here in 2025. We have some strong district, the campus supports in place to assist the team and students in math. Seventh grade math for the last three years, we've been above or aligned to state, region, and all three levels, approaches, needs, and masters. And you see that this year we are significantly above the region in both the approaches and the needs for courses. Eighth grade STAR, well above region and state and approaches, and we can see that huge growth there with that eighth grade team. About 10% gains at the masters level from 24 to 25. So that eighth grade team, that's actually one of the support estimates that I may mention later. Our eighth grade team is kind of helping with some of the leading of that sixth grade math coming this year. And algebra, this is another area where we have seen a little bit of lower performance below state and region the last two years of all three levels, particularly needs and masters. Again, Mr. Hunter, we do have a large portion of our students who take eighth grade algebra at Peterson Middle School, and they don't factor into this. This is just the high school ninth grade algebra student. And again, we do have some campus and district supports in place for that algebra team. All right, and so we're moving into our reading data really quickly. Grade gains for 23 to 24, and we've maintained that in 25 for our sixth grade readings. You can see they made some gains there, and then we have maintained that level. Seventh period reading, this is the third year in a row to be above the state and regional data in all three performance levels, approaches, needs. data in all three performance levels, approaches, needs, and masters for our seventh grade reading team. Eighth grade reading are also above and consistent with state and regional data for all three years in all three levels. So we get really positive data trends there in eighth grade reading. English one at Tybee is consistently performing with state and regional, aligned with those data trends. So where we're going up, the state has also seen some increase, where we're dropping, we also have seen that statewide, and so we're, we're kinda hanging on consistently there with state and region data. And then English two, our final data point that we're gonna look at, uh, also had a nine percent above the, um, the region and the state there in approaches, and ten percent. So we had some big kinda gaps created there with our state and region data this year, this past year and twenty twenty-five with our English two team. And with that, we are going to start with Hell Country High School.
Good evening, school board. Dr. Ringo, uh, thank you again for giving us this opportunity to come and brag on our staff and students. Um, we've done this a few times, and you know it's a pleasure of mine. I enjoy doing it. Uh, it's a great opportunity to give, create student opportunity. Um, our demographics are very similar to what they have in the past. We've leveled off on graduates. We were in seventies right after COVID. Just a number of kids weren't going back to school, had to convince them to come back in to, to finish things up. So we, we kinda cleaned things up, uh, in twenty-one, twenty-two, and then it got less as the, as time went on. Um, we have, uh, you can see that our demographic information is similar, but not the same. Uh, we, we've never put our African-American population up, and we've got a few more kids over the last couple of years that have taken up part of that percentage. But, uh, it's still an opportunity for, it doesn't matter where you're going, we're gonna set goals for kids. We've already been to St. Phillips this year. We're doing college career readiness with the kids, uh, military. Uh, the, our, the easiest way, the most effective way for our kids to get that CCMR is through Texas College Bridge. It's an extra English and an extra math. The hardest thing is to convince them they need to take an extra English and an extra math, 'cause it takes some time to do that. And we've already had several kids completed this year, and so we're way ahead on that. That also gives them two years of entrance into state schools. Um, some of them are four-year universities as well, that they don't have to take a TSI or an SAT or an ACT. So it is a benefit to them. Sometimes when they're just wanting to work and moving out of, of Tybee High School, 'cause they weren't involved in main choir football, it's hard to convince them to, to go ahead and take those over too. But we have, we have quite a few of them doing that, and our percentages will go up on that. Um, I don't know that there was anything else. It's, you know, the kids change. Uh, the colleagues back here are gonna prepare for us and send them to us. Kids are, usually need something else besides the academia. We do have some kids that have missed enough school that, that they need a little bit more tutoring to get through the STAR test, but most of them need something else to get them to the next level. Uh, we had a girl today that had been talking about going military, military, military. She just broke down today, said, "I don't think I wanna go to military. What else can we do?" So Miss Winter checks out, it's for about two and a half hours, researching, looking at stuff. She was so happy when she left, she's looking at hygienist stuff and, and things like that. So that happens a lot, 'cause you have time to, to sit and talk with kids and then ask them questions about what they wanna do. But, uh, you know, Ms. Balling continues to support us. We had, uh, five kids last year getting ten thousand dollar scholarships, so they're in cosmetology, trainer, uh, auto mechanics, um, two auto mechanics and a welder. So she continues to help us open that door when they say, "Oh, I can't afford it, here you go." Everybody owes a little bit of money, but you're gonna make so much more. But, uh, we appreciate your continued support. I don't think there's really any, anything magical. I mean, there's always new stuff that you put in there, and some of it works. If it doesn't work, kids always change, and if you're not willing to change, then they'll, they'll go live without you. They'll, they'll stop being successful. So, uh, we appreciate your support.
It was nice to see Ms. Williams here.
It was.
And being an alum.
Yeah, yeah, she came back, she worked at ECC for a number of years as an aide, got her teaching certificate, and then moved back to the campus.
We need to have her come talk to your kiddos, have, have her come, her come to the campus.
Yeah. Oh, no, she would be, she would be excellent. Yeah. Yeah, we, we have, uh, actually the, um, band director, choral director in Hunt was from Hell Country High School for a number of years. So, we have kids, it, it's just a different path. You know, they just need support and then need an opportunity, but, uh, we have a lot of kids doing a lot of different things, and so we must appreciate you also.
Great program.
Any questions? Thank you for all you do, sir. We appreciate you.
And next, we have Mr. Schralla, Tybee High School.
We always like to start with celebrations and some cheers. Uh, I'd like to do the same if it's okay. Um, you know, since the Kelly Clarkson Show, uh, my life is taking a turn. And I did speak with my agent today, and he, and they said that I don't have to charge you guys for this speech. And I appreciate that. No, looking at the numbers, uh, we didn't know how, uh, the year was gonna start. Uh, it was, it was, it was hard to anticipate what it's gonna be like. It started with a lot of energy, uh, lots of buzz going on, and some of that buzz was just excitement of knowing that we got a lot to do. Uh, we've got some things that we need to fix, we've got some things, uh, and going in a direction. Looking at our Algebra One numbers, you know, our PLCs meet everyone's day. Uh, we get together, we talk about kids, we talk about our scope and sequence, our curriculum, our NTSS process. Uh, we meet every six weeks to talk about individual kids, and the one thing that reverberates through both of those processes is teachers need time with their students that need extra help. Uh, and kinda modeling after, uh, How Peterson Middle School, I like to, uh, I guess the best form of flattery is invitation. So we needed more time with our kids. We had one day a week that we were able to give kids a flexible time to go. I, we needed more than that. Um, so we, uh, invented what was an advisory period. During that advisory time, we are able to schedule almost an hour, sometimes an hour and a half extra per week for the students that need it. So during our PLC times, we are able to find the kids that need it. During our NTSS process, we find the kids that need that extra STAR time. Uh, they're either at, at risk of not passing, or they have failed already, and we are able to put those kids in a room with our best teachers that have planned the lessons for them. So every week, we have those kids meeting in our advisory periods on Tuesdays and Thursdays, um, and we are giving those kids that extra help. Um, I cannot help but say that it's going to be an outstanding thing for not only our Algebra, but also for English one. Uh, we've spoken to kids already, and sometimes it's those kids that you don't really anticipate liking doing extra math or extra Algebra One, and they say, "I can tell it's helpful. When I go into class, it makes it easier for me." So the things that we're helping with our Algebra One numbers, our meets and masters, have been unchanged with lots of room to grow, but the part that we're trying to hit is our approaches numbers. Uh, we've gotta find a way to triage those numbers and to get them up, and one of that is mainly for Algebra One was our advisory time and our intervention time. Our English one, uh, we're above the state, uh, in all those numbers, uh, but our English one approaches did take a hit. Um, sometimes it's not about what's on the test, it's how you take the test, or however your strategies that you're using. Uh, we saw that our short constructive responses, our extended, uh, constructive responses weren't where they need to be, uh, which is basically our short answer in the essays. Uh, so we took it upon ourselves to send teachers to Region Twenty to get trained, uh, with different strategies. They come back in PLC times, they share those things, uh, with their cohort teachers. Uh, we did calibrations, uh, within our departments to make sure that they're aligned, and we know how, uh, to implement those strategies on the test for our kids. Um, and the kids were able, and the teachers were able to see those constructive responses, and they can build upon the strengths that they have, uh, and if they don't have. Uh, so it's been a, a, a lot of work, it's a lot of planning, uh, to change your entire schedule, uh, for your, your entire bell schedule to incorporate another, uh, class period, but it's gonna be well worth it. I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna be worth, uh, the time and effort and getting extra, getting those kids into the classrooms with some of our best, the finest teachers, it's gonna help a lot. Um, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our CCMR. Uh, since two thousand twenty-two, uh, we went from sixty-eight percent, twenty-three, we went to seventy-one percent, and in two thousand twenty-four, we're setting at eighty percent. We know that the things that we're doing at Tybee, not which is CCMR, but the things that we're gonna do with Algebra One to get us those few extra points, uh, to do things with Algebra One, uh, we're doing extra PS, uh, SAT tutoring and those non-tested courses. We're doing everything we can within the school day to get our kids up. So, not gonna jinx this, but I'm gonna say it, it's very possible we're shooting for that. And it's very possible that we could be sitting here celebrating, hey, may campus next year, but the things that we're doing this year. I didn't jinx it.
Any questions? Ho- how's the early college program going this year, year one?
It's still, it's, it's one of those things that we're, we're just kind of filling out. Uh, we've got lots of meetings. The Northwest Vista has been extremely, um, just, they're, they're, they're great, great people to work with. We've got great, uh, leadership in Ms. Decker, uh, Ms. Arns, and Mr. Cook. Um, it's going good. I think the kids, uh, some of them are in showtime, uh, know what they're having to do, uh, so. Thank you, guys.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Dr. Mouton for How Peterson Middle School.
Good evening again. Dr. Ringo, President of the School, and the board offices. So thank you for giving me the honor to give you a glimpse of How Peterson Middle School. We are embracing the PLCs on our campus, and because of that, I am happy to say that How Peterson Middle School is a promising school, um, by Solution Tree. We were awarded that early this fall, and what that means is we're implementing the PLCs with fidelity, but also they have seen our academic game. So we're shooting for a model PLC school. They know some things, just like STAR did on TA with sixth grade math, and we're doing some tweaking, to ensure we become a model PLC school. So we have PLCs twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and Thursdays is a breakdown of just, um, sixth grade math or eighth grade social studies, so it's more intentional with that grade level, not only for student growth and gains, but also for teacher growth. And so that's the intentionality of breaking down, instead of two PLCs with the entire grade level, six, seven, eighth grade math, we have just sixth grade math on those Thursdays. Um, in addition, we're doing Capturing Kids' Heart, this is our second year, continue to build those relationships with our teachers, staff, and students, and because of that, we are in good company with Daniels Elementary. We are a rising star campus. Um, our next step is a national showcase. Hopefully that is coming next, but right now, it is a universal language at How Peterson Middle School, not only verbiage, but with hot hand signals, that everybody knows from class period to class period, grade level, grade level. Uh, sixth grade's last year, they know seventh grade. What's the difference? Seventh grade's last year, eighth grade this year, they know. And now that Tybee has the same Capturing Kids' Heart when they go to Tybee next year, same universal language. So because of those great things, um, we are achieving, hopefully, the model PLC school, the national showcase, but we wanna make sure we get in there with those spike interventions and also enrichment, because as you saw, eighth grade math, we had ten percent masters, we're shooting for fifteen percent this school year. But when we do spike interventions, where we put the kids that already know, right? They need to go into spike enrichment. So everybody doing that thirty minutes built into the schedule, every single day have somewhere to go. And then on Fridays, if there's not math, if there's not English or social studies or science, then we have a club. So that's additional enrichment. We have chess club, yearbook, uh, student council. So we're making fun for our kiddos, and that's changing the climate and culture of How Peterson Middle School. The culture is, um, having sixth grade awards, but the academic side of it with the climate, we want our teachers there, and if our teachers wanna come, then our students wanna come, because they know. And so we're enjoying just continuing to move. Tomorrow night, um, part of the climate, we're having a tailgate party, so you guys will want to come out and enjoy. But if you have any questions for me, please let me know.
I have a question. You've mentioned the, uh, showcase designation or model designation. That's, that designation is from what organization?
Capturing Kids' Heart themselves.
All right.
Yes, yes, that's for the national showcase. And then the model PLC school is from Solution Tree. So we're one step closer to each one. Um, year two for Capturing Kids' Heart, and the model PLC, if we just continue implementing with fidelity, I think we'll get there. They're looking at our, our student achievement and growth as well. They're just not looking at, you know, we're putting these PLCs in place twice a week. They wanna know what we're doing in those PLCs, and then are we getting the student outcomes as well?
And what is Solution Tree?
Well, Solution Tree is an organization, um, a, a company, um, that, like, the PLC conferences that we've gone to the last four rounds, that's the head company, that's the hub, uh, with Rick DeForre. So it's Rick DeForre, Solution Tree. I guess there's an umbrella over all of PLCs.
Okay.
That's the best answer I can give you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I should, I have one question. Um, your last goal, your goal that you listed here talks about the P4, the walkthrough template that the campus instructional leaders, um, do on a, they do those on a weekly basis. Can you share a little bit of?
Yes. Uh, Dr. Ringo, he, uh, gave us all a chart through five walkthroughs a week, and those walkthroughs are the template, it's called P4. So when we go into the classrooms and visit the teachers, we wanna give them some constructive feedback, and we call it P4. Um, you know, like, you have a great lesson, but, you know, are we on the right spoken sequence? Um, is your pacing correct? Um, are you connecting with the students? Is your learning target connecting with the lesson? So we wanna give them some, some P4 or some constructive feedback that they can use and that they can grow. You know, a perfect example, I have a, a co-teach model, but my co-teacher was, like, beside, because she was in a classroom with a master teacher. But she's an awesome teacher herself, so my feedback to both of them was, what if the co-teacher, you know, took charge of this group of students or to this part of the lesson? And they both took that feedback and they worked on it. It was like, how can I get better in this area? Because as the co-teacher, the student should know who is teacher of record and who's co-teacher. They should be working just like this. And so we're working on that at How Peterson.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Outstanding job by all three of our secondary campuses. Moving right along, we're gonna have discussion, uh, by, I believe, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Arns covering District Goal Two.
Yes. District Goal Two, this is our screener data. This helps identify where kids are at Tier One, but kids that are, need Tier Two, Tier Three supports, and Ms. Johnson, uh, will get into more detail on that.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Ringo, and members of the board. Uh, I'm excited to share our beginning of the year data with you. Um, when we look at our, our beginning of the year data, we are looking at universal screeners, and so for Kinder First and Second in Reading, that would be, um, class data, and then for Third, Fourth, and Fifth Grade in Reading, that's math. And then for K through five, that is math, uh, math data. And so these are assessments that we give beginning, middle, and end of the year, and the purpose of these screeners is to find and honestly over-identify students that need additional assistance to make progress in the general curriculum. So who are our students that need more supports, uh, to make progress? When we look at our data, when we look at Tier One, that's our, that's our basic instruction that all students receive. Tier Two is when we provide interventions to students when they need a little bit of extra help at grade level. So that might be, uh, working in small group, uh, that might be going to a specific intervention time to target specific skills. And then our Tier Three intervention is when students need intensive intervention that may or may not be on grade level. It might be filling in some gaps below grade level. And some of those interventions might look like, um, additional small group instruction, it might be dyslexia intervention, um, fluency practice in math, that kind of thing. So when we look at our beginning of the year data, uh, this is kindergarten reading, and you can see that our Kinders came in this year, um, really needing a lot of intervention. Uh, that's something that our Kinder teachers are looking at, and they're already taking action on, and they're discussing in their PLCs. One of the great things, uh, that we have happening right now is Ms. Dennison over at the Early Childhood Center has done some research and said, "Hey, um, you guys are using Hegarty for phonics and phonemic awareness at the elementary level." It's, the kids are successful in that programming. Uh, and she said, "Ms. Johnson, I found, uh, Hegarty phonemic awareness for grades, uh, for four and five-year-olds and for three and four-year-olds. We wanna start the work earlier. Can I get this material?" We said, "Yes, let's do it." So she is already putting things in place, um, to help our threes, fours, and five-year-olds at the Early Childhood Center, so that when they come to kindergarten, um, we're getting them with some foundational skills from the beginning. Our first grade, uh, has been consistent, um, and so we've got about forty, thirty Our first grade, um, has been consistent. Um, and so we've got about forty, thirty-four percent at the beginning of the year that, uh, we're keeping our eye on, and, um, they've got some interventions going in the meantime. We also do dyslexia screening for our first and second graders, or sorry, yes, first and second graders. And, um, so, and just keeping our eye on those that are at risk for dyslexia. Second grade also, uh, for reading has been pretty consistent. When you look at third grade, uh, the positive thing is they did not, there was not a change at the beginning of the year from the end of year last year as second graders. So what that tells us is that we didn't have that summer slide that our students came in ready to go, or they left off. So that's very positive. When you look at fourth grade reading, you're going to see in fourth grade in reading and math, the effects of the level readers that we have at the elementary campuses. Um, our students have maintained skills over the summer, and very few students are coming in at fourth grade reading needing those intensive interventions. So that's just amazing. Um, we're really seeing those effects now.
This is year one or year, this is year two?
This is year two for level readers.
Okay.
It made a huge impact last year.
Going forward, um, yes. At the, the, the third grade, uh, the fourth grade, um, do you offer any, any summer reading programs at any of the, on any of the elementary campuses?
Um, summer reading, no, we have not. Um, I know that there are things locally in the community, um, through the, uh, library and things like that. And then, of course, we have, um, summer school situations, but, um, we have not initiated a summer reading program.
Do you know any initiatives that, that have those types of programs that can work with that?
Um, some have more summer school initiatives or do like, um, a springboard at the very end of the summer going into the next year. Um, we do have a new program though, a new reading program called Bean Stack that our elementaries are getting into practice. And so that's an opportunity for us this coming summer for our students to earn incentives for reading throughout the summer. So that's something that we are implementing starting this year. You're welcome. All right. And then fifth grade, again, more students are ready to, uh, receive instruction at the tier one level. Um, our members, our beginning of the year data looks really good. When we move into math, again, uh, kinder, our starting point, we've got about twenty-two percent of our students that just need a little bit more, um, intervention going into kinder. First grade, we have fewer students needing those intensive interventions at the beginning of the year. I mean, that data looks great. Second grade has been very consistent, so we continue to work in our PLCs, um, to identify those students that need an intervention. Our third grade, again, has been very consistent over the past three years. Fourth grade, what you see up here is again, that impact of our level readers. Our, um, we have five percent at the beginning of the year that are needing intensive interventions. That is amazing. So it's really helped our kids. And then again, in fifth grade, we're seeing the impacts of that math instruction, um, to the beginning of the year. Very few students needing intensive interventions. So some of our highlights, we have more students that have entered fourth grade, ready to learn at the tier one level in reading and math. And again, uh, the level readers can be a big impact on our campuses and our students. We have more students entering the fifth grade, uh, ready to learn at tier one in math. And our teachers are analyzing this data and planning in their PLCs to provide students interventions, um, during their meantime at all levels. So our next steps, our, our teachers have already analyzed beginning of the year data. Uh, and they've already put interventions in place for students. They're providing interventions, they're progress monitoring, shifting interventions if they see this, that interventions are not working for students, and constantly discussing those during the PLC. And then, once we have our middle of the year data, they'll look at that comparison as well, um, and shift those interventions as needed. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we're rocking and rolling, and, uh, we have a Tasby and Tessa annual convention report.
Mr. Preschel and Board Trustees, many of us attended that. Uh, Ms. Smith was the president of Tasby, and I'd like to turn over to y'all to share out, um, any great things or learnings. And the first one obviously I'll share was our student performance, um, at, at that convention, and we'll have that performance January. The second thing I like, I did not know this until we arrived, my aunt taught a session for, uh, Team of Eight Sustainability and Leadership. And, uh, she was there, she's a retired teacher from Uble ISD, and has worked for Rice University in her second career, and, uh, her and her business partner. Um, it was a great session. I'll talk about the political pressures school districts face now, um, and just how to really be a good Team of Eight, because also with that, uh, not just political pressures, but there are so many different data points, as we see, and how just to be an effective Team of Eight in that process. And it was great to see her present.
You might have her come and do our Team of Eight training.
She does do that too, yes.
I'll, I'll start out with just highlighting one, um, session I went to on the teacher incentive allotment, and kind of how other districts are doing that. And with the eleven-hundred, twelve-hundred districts in the state, um, how many are ahead of us on that process? A few. How many are about with us? A bunch. How many have been, are way behind us on that? A whole lot also. Um, uh, uh, my daughter who teaches in Canyon ISD, at least at the elementary school level, she doesn't know about high school, uh, this is their first year for doing that. And this, we are in our co-board like sixth year or so, is that right?
I think we're in seventh, like, um, fourth and seventh.
Seventh year? And, and Mr. Johadi, remind me about, like, somebody here.
She's counting her fingers, very vision.
Um, last year, our teachers in this district got about a hundred and...
When we first, first started, yes, sir, uh, this year we reached over a million allotment.
Yeah, to, to, total for the, for the whole program. So I mean, want to compensate teachers for doing a good job, uh, proving they're doing a good job. I know that, you know, it's been growing, 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 and, um, uh, some places are probably further down the line than we are, but we're in a really good spot. Thank you.
I'll talk a little bit.
All right, go for it.
So I, I went to one, uh, run by Leander, but it was, their big thing was about communication, uh, across districts, across our home district, and how they lacked it. Um, and the amount of districts that actually are very similar to them when they first had to replace everybody, but, um, just the discommunication between everybody. And hearing a lot of the principals talk, um, y'all are doing a great job of, of really portraying one voice, one message across the entire campus. Um, and being able to throw out emails, like, I get Soral's email all the time. I send it to junk all the time, but, you know. Uh, no, but y'all do a great job. And this Dale has, has taken that upon herself too, going to Starkey, um, to make sure that all, all parents and everybody knows what's going on on the campus. Um, that's very important, uh, as a parent of kids, to know what's going on on the campus. Especially you have to, three, three campuses have to keep control of, so I'll leave it to my wife to do, but, um, you know, but seeing those emails and seeing those things posted on Facebook or on X, things like that are very important for us. Um, and so, and seeing that some, a lot of districts are struggling with that, and seeing, seeing KST really excel in that this year has been wonderful. And so y'all can teach that next year. If anybody wanted to take that on, it'd be great. So, it was great to, to see.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, I, I went to one that was called, uh, Be the Culture You Want to See. And, and it was a really good talking about, um, what the culture you want in your district needs to be from the top down, and everybody working, working on that culture. And it said, um, create a safety, uh, place, uh, over-communicate what you want done, be very clear, uh, capitalize on threshold moments, and embrace fun. And it said to drive out, uh, fear from your system by, uh, being vulnerable and talking about what's going on. And it said, one thing that was really interesting, it says, establish a purpose. It says, you have priorities whether you name them or not. If you want to grow, you better name the purpose and move toward it, and make your staff believe in that goal and get them going. So it's, uh, it just talked about deciding what you want the culture of the district to be, and then from the head, Dale, make it, make it what you want. Have we done that?
No. Yes, we have. PLC CKH and Establishment Common Language Technology is vital to that success. Yes.
That, that reminds me of a church example of, I'd rather see a sermon any day than hear one. Same example, yes. Anybody else?
Uh, if I could just add a few things, um, during the convention, I wasn't able to go to any sessions, uh, general sessions. But a couple of weeks later, I went to the Mexican-American School Board Association, their national conference, which is always held in San Antonio, and, um, is actually a, a really good conference. It's small. The sessions are, um, there's not as many and there's not as many people, so you have a lot of good interaction. And, um, there was one I went to that was on student mental health, uh, resources and, you know, which we all know in our community, especially right now, um, you know, making sure we have enough mental health resources for our students and staff is extremely important. So, um, uh, Dr. Gonzalez, who is actually a, uh, one of our state reps, out of El Paso, she is the executive director of this association. And, um, she and, uh, some experts in the field put together a checklist for school board members of, you know, questions that we should be asking. So I was going to share, I'm just going to share this with Dr. Ringo, and have you, you know, take a look at it and make sure all of these little boxes are checked off. And I'm, I'm sure they are.
We'll check, that's cool.
But I think it's just some good resource for us, and maybe put this in the prior report for our board members. And then I went to another session on AI, which we, you know, all know, it's, you know, it's moody, fast, and furious. And, um, there was a, a Bill Gates Foundation, um, called, I don't know if you're familiar with it, Digital Promise.org. And they offer a lot of, uh, resources, free resources to school districts. Um, and, uh, one of the, the presenter, she's the executive director, um, murder grad, executive director of this, um, of this, uh, foundation. And she said, you know, again, as a board, we want to make sure that any AI program meets our mission goals, that we have guardrails in place to ensure that our AI policies are best practices, you know, across districts. So, um, and again, another caller looking closely at, at that as well. But, uh, but that, you might look, take a look at, um, that organization. Do you not, are you familiar with it, Dr. Ringo?
Not the AI.
Digital Promise.org?
No. I know we have, we've implemented AI guidelines this year, but I'm not familiar with that organization.
Okay. Well, you might, you might look at it.
Thank you for sharing. Any other questions, comments?
I, I would like to say, I've watched Belinda over the last few years be officer in our, um, uh, organization and how hard she's worked. And it is, people have no idea how many hours, uh, how many meetings, how many miles she's put on her car, uh, how many people she talks to. When I'm walking around with her, she knows everybody. Um, and I just want to say thank you because this community, this community has no idea what a valuable resource and a jewel we have in her, and how she has, uh, been a component for this district as well as, uh, all districts across the state. And she's, she's a jewel. And I, I love you and I appreciate all you've done.
Thank you.
Yep, yes. Absolutely. Great word. Thank you. All right. We ready to move on to, uh, financial reports?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. All right. Show me the money.
All right, so, uh, as we kind of start here, this is the first month of our fiscal year, the twelve months, and I, I point that out because we are on a fiscal, uh, start of September, August, or that's our fiscal year. There are some districts that are July start, and I, I bring this up because in a couple of months, December usually is when we'll bring, these are all unaudited numbers, uh, we'll, we'll bring the audit to the board for, uh, approval to take action, to accept that, that audit. And, uh, was made aware, Dr. Ringo has probably shared with some of the members of the board, that as of right now, the federal government has not released, uh, the very draft, not the final, what auditors use the compliance manual, um, to, to finalize the audit. And so TA has extended, uh, the deadline for July start schools, uh, not yet for September because we're required to submit to TA in January. So I, I, I bring that up because there could be some, some changes as we get closer to December in the audit. But, uh, that, I, I, the other part of that is, these are, especially in fund balance, unaudited numbers until our audit, um, is finalized. So, uh, again, this being the first month, you can kind of see, and this is a little bit kind of deceiving, we adopted a deficit budget for the second year of 1.9 million, which actually was a million dollars less than what we did last year, uh, even with raises and having to increase expenditures. Uh, you see two point, about $2 million. That's because we had a budget in that last month to appropriate some money out of fund balance to, to pay for some E-rate, which is technology, infrastructure type deal. Uh, but we, we don't, we, our hope is not to operate a fiscal, or excuse me, a deficit budget. Uh, that's what we adopted in sounds like, uh, Mr. Soral, who does some royalties anyways, because he capitalized on the district, so maybe there's some revenue there that, that we're going to be getting. Uh, moving forward, we have, uh, kind of our payroll budget, so you can kind of see that line item expecting, you know, when we adopted the budget, about a 40 million dollar. Again, this is a little over eighty percent of our overall budget, um, is, is personnel, is, is, is our people who, who are next to our, our students are the most important thing. Um, and then just kind of where we should be with, with one month kind of essentially through. And so we do anticipate some payroll savings as we have every year. Uh, again, supply budgets, and again, these ebb and flow throughout the year. Some, some, some departments have budgets spent a lot more on the front end, some spending more, uh, later on down, down the line. Uh, and then the last one that we have this evening is our tax collection report. And a couple of things to point out here, obviously, we have not collected any money for our new year tax collections. Uh, the state, after this legislative session increased, or proposed an increase, uh, of the homestead exemption from 100,000 to 140,000, and actually, I believe, 150,000 for 65 and older. That does require voter approval. So, uh, we're looking at delaying those tax tickets coming out, uh, because technically it has to pass. And we feel like it's, it's going to pass, uh, with the voter approval, but I just wanted to be mindful of that and point that out. We still have collected some stuff from prior years a, as we do, but not anything from our current plan. So that kind of concludes the financial statements. Let's talk a few questions, um, of me regarding, regarding this, this item.
I have a question. Are you going to put out something publicly that, or the statements are going to go out later? Because your, your tax office is going to start getting a lot of phone calls.
Yes, ma'am. And actually, we're working with the attorneys. I think what we're going to do is send out kind of a preliminary statement that shows the 100,000 and the 140,000, and we'll respect with a, with a, some verbiage on it. That's, we did that last time we had that increase, and I think that's the guidance that we're getting from, uh, our, our tax agents. Yes, ma'am. But that'll be coming out shortly.
Very good. Any other questions? Let's move on to our action items for tonight, and, uh, don't go far, Dr. Jahadi. Mr. Jahadi?
Uh, we do have the first action item tonight, I believe, begins on page sixty-six in Board Book, and this is for purchases over 50,000. So you can see on sixty-seven, uh, we do have one item for the board's consideration, and that is a boiler at Tybee High School, and the amount of about 113,000 dollars. So this is, uh, over 50,000 that would require, uh, board's approval. I would agree with you, the number is over 50,000.
Got a motion or a second, a second to Dr. Strauss? All right. Any questions on that? Self-explanatory, all in favor? And that carries six oh. And sir? All right. Next item is a budget amendment.
Yes, sir. And beginning there on page sixty-eight, continue on page sixty-nine, this is a budget amendment for the board's consideration tonight. This is the district's portion of the Hail claim, our deductible, so it's the amount of, in the amount of about 3.2 million dollars. We're looking at taking about 1.6 million from committed fund balance and the remaining 1.6 million out of uncommitted fund balance. So this is a line item we're continuing to see, or Tasby has been phenomenal with Mr. Van Vossen and seeing more and more that, that they're approving for repair. So our dollar amount is going up, continues to go up, you know, roughly, I think right now we're up close to $10 million, anticipate that going up, but our deductible is not going to change and that's that 3.2, that's what, what, what we're on the hook for.
Want to highlight with the board too, the audit is not done because we're here with the federal level. However, for fiscal year 2425, since we're talking about fund balance, we are projecting to add roughly 1.1 million to the fund balance at the end of fiscal year 25.
Thank you. For all you do. Any other questions on the amendment? I guess we need to consider a motion.
I recommend that the board of trustees approve the attached budget amendment.
Thank you, Dr. Strauss, a second. Mr. Boone, thank you very much. Any questions before we move? All, all in favor of approving this amendment? And that carries six oh. Go and spend. All right. All right. Next is personnel items. I'll hand that over to you.
Mr. Presley, board trustees, before we get into the approvals, this is wrong personnel, this position does not require board approval, is our public relations specialist. So you see a familiar face in the audience, but a new face to this role, Ms. Tammy Rinn will be our public relations specialist. So Ms. Rinn. Ms. Rinn has been at Tybee High School, has the assistant principals secretary, working closely for that campus. But if you've kept up with the website of not just Tybee High School, but the district, that has been the work of Ms. Rinn, a lot of work of Ms. Rinn over the last year, but also the social media posts, telling our story, communication messaging, and we're carrying that on here at Central Office with her coming into this role. So very excited for that. So congratulations.
Congratulations.
And board, provided before you are a couple of resignations for and a couple of recommendations for professional appointments with the details of who those people are and even our substitute list.
We're going to allow Ms. Taylor to retire?
I know. So that is a big news. She's got grandkids and she said last week, we were talking, she said, you know, I've always said one more year, one more year and that's this year so I can see my grandkids.
She's been incredible. So we'll miss, absolutely miss her, but we got her to the end of the year, so. All right. Any other information on that?
No, sir. That's it.
Then I'll take a recommendation or a motion to approve the hires and resignations.
Will we approve the administrative appointment for, no, that's the wrong one.
We don't approve the resignations.
Page seventy.
We want an administrative appointment to the 2025, 2026 school year.
That's, that's not where, yeah.
That's the next one.
But it, the motion's not worth it. It doesn't match.
We approve the professional appointment for the 2025, 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Can I have a second? And Dr. Strauss? All right. All in favor? And that motion carries six oh. Thank you very much. Now we have...
A professional appointment.
Yeah, professional appointment.
For the final action item is a professional appointment. This is for the Head Start Coordinator, for our Head Start Education Coordinator, Amanda Martin. That is provided before you, also.
May I have a motion for Ms. Martin's approval?
I recommend that the board of trustees approve the administrative professional appointment of Amanda Martin for the Head Start Education Coordinator at ECC for the 25, 26 school year.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Strauss. A second?
A second.
Go ahead. All right. Mr. Boone, thank you for the second. All in favor of the appointment? And that carries six oh. Thank you very, very much. That brings us to the end of our agenda and we are going to close into executive session. And so the presiding officer will announce a closed session is permissible for each meeting of the board per policy of local, but for the purpose of consideration of matters for which closed sessions are authorized by Title V, Chapter 551 of Texas Government Code, whereupon the superintendent, at the majority vote of this board of trustees, may present in closed session for the board's consideration or discussion of subjects or matters authorized by law. So we will close our regular meeting and move into executive session.